The snare is broken and we are escaped. Our help is in the name of the Lord who made heaven and earth. Let's pray. Now, Lord, as we open the Word together this afternoon, I pray that you would give us a special time in the Word of God, that we would look forward to being instructed and encouraged and built up in our faith by the truth of your Word that is preached to us. I ask that we would be attentive, not only to what the preacher is saying, but that we would be examining our own selves, our own lives, and hearts in light of what your Word says. I pray that you would use the Word of God to build us as a people, that you would bring conviction where needed, that you would correct us as needed, that you would bless us with the Word of God. I pray for Brother Schwenke as he preaches, that you would speak through him, that you would be in control of him as he preaches, that he would be able to express the Word of God and the truth of it very plainly, that we would understand it and know what we ought to do. And, Lord, as we praise you, I pray that you would be praised, because, Lord, you're worthy of the worship that we offer to you, and I pray that we would be attentive to that as well, that when we lift up our voices to sing your praise, that you would be praised and that you would take pleasure in the worship we offer you. We ask it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Good afternoon. If you take your hymnals and turn with me to 493, number 493, one of the old classics, "Tell Me the Story of Jesus." Stand with me while we sing this, number 493 in the hymnal. Amen. You can switch over to your psalter and have a seat if you'd like, and we'll turn to Psalm 63a. Psalm 63a, this is one we've been somewhat familiar with. We've been singing recently, Psalm 63a in the psalter. If you'll take your hymnal once again and stand with me and turn to 311. 311, back in the hymnal, we'll sing "I Love Thy Kingdom, Lord." Amen. If you'll take your hymnal once again and stand with me and turn to 311. 311, back in the hymnal, we'll sing "I Love Thy Kingdom, Lord." Amen. You can be seated.
God bless you this afternoon. Thank you. You have your Bible. Let me invite you to turn to the book of Zechariah, Zechariah in chapter number four, and I'd like to begin reading this morning from this afternoon. Okay, I got the preacher disease. I am so glad he did that, because I know it's going to be about 10 times between the next 45 minutes. I'm gonna do the same thing. We may be here 2:00 in the morning by the time this is done, I gotta tell you. So I know we're in the afternoon, I think, but then again, it is morning somewhere, isn't it? Like Hawaii or something, so... But it certainly is a joy to be here. I don't care what time it is. I'm glad to be at Berea Baptist Church, and I praise the Lord for your faithfulness to Christ. You have your Bible to the Old Testament prophet, Zechariah. Actually, I'm just gonna talk until Brother John finds Zechariah. So I just... You got that, bro? Somebody, you wanna just check on your brother there? Just double-check. Yeah, okay, we're good to go then. Zechariah, chapter number four. When you come to the book of Zechariah, the first half of Zechariah is the story of God giving eight... Well, the scholars call them visions, but the Bible never uses that word. The word vision is found only one time in the book of Zechariah, and it's not a good thing. It's the false prophets that are proud of their own visions. So while the Word of God never calls them visions, that's what the experts seem to choose, but I'd just rather call them something else, so I call them messages that God delivered to Zechariah. There are eight of them, and the stunning thing is they all happen on February the 15th, 519 B.C. So it's an awfully busy night for Zechariah. In fact, Zechariah four, right halfway through, and he's gonna tell you how tiring it is. But that night, there are eight different messages that God delivers to his prophet, Zechariah. And they all start, of course, they all seem to be different, but there is a theme that begins to develop. And now that four are down, and there's still four more to go, we start to get a taste of what that theme is. In the first message God delivers, back in Zechariah, chapter one, God gives the people good and comfortable words, and it was necessary, because they were facing trouble and persecution. Of course, it was the Babylonians at first, and then the Persians, and there's just a lot of trouble the people of God were facing. It's interesting that in that first message, the world is at peace, because they claim we have conquered Jerusalem and the city of God. The fascinating thing, I'll give you the spoiler alert, not that we're getting to it today, but by the time you get to the eighth message, the world's no longer at rest, but God is. That's kinda how that works. When the world's at ease and comfortable, you can be sure God's getting stirred up. But when the world's all done, that's when God is finally at rest. So in the first message, God tells Zechariah, "You preach to the people and tell them it may not look good right now." We haven't gotten to the eighth message yet. In message number two, God makes a promise that must have seemed impossible at the start. In effect, he says, "One day, those who are the hunters, those mighty armies that have ravaged Jerusalem, God promises they will become the hunted." In message number three, remember, the city of Jerusalem was in ruins and rubble, and they had finally come back and started to rebuild some of it. But the God of the Bible says, "I'm gonna protect Jerusalem with fire and glory." In message number four, God tells the people of God that there is only one hope for Israel, and there's only one hope for you and for me, and that would be the branch. That would be the greater Son of David, the one who forgives our iniquities. I gotta tell you, these messages are incredibly powerful. And for Zechariah, he's only halfway through the night. So in verse number one, the Bible says, "The angel that talked with me came again." That's a fascinating story in itself. There's an angel, not the angel of the Lord now, but a heavenly messenger that has been sent to Zechariah. And for, not all, but most of the messages he receives that night, that angel is right by his side, explaining what is happening, explaining what takes place next. He wasn't there in message four, but he shows up again in message number five, "And the angel that talked with me came again, and waked me as a man that is wakened out of his sleep." So you can imagine, I sure could imagine, that somewhere in the middle of that February night, Zechariah's fallen asleep. He's exhausted. I mean, just the events of those first four messages would wear anybody out. And so now, after the fourth message, he falls asleep, so the angel has to come and wake him up. And that, to me, is very important, because you and I need to be reminded as we come to Zechariah that as God gives these eight messages to Zechariah, Zechariah is not dreaming. That's why I don't use the word vision. The first reason is because God doesn't. And the second reason is because as soon as you say the word vision, then all of a sudden, people feel they have license to start describing and start applying different meanings to different things. I'm leery of that. I despise that. I think there's enough in the Bible that I do understand or that I ought to understand without worrying about the stuff that nobody understands. You know, the old preacher put it simply, "I'm not worried about the parts of the Bible I don't get, but I am worried about the parts that I do." And there's a whole lot of convicting messages in the Word of God that are awfully plain. So the message comes, and you and I are reminded, Zechariah is not sleeping. Zechariah is not dreaming. Zechariah is not in ecstatic state. He is not in a trance. This is why I don't like that word, vision. And Zechariah, for whatever it's worth, he's not in a visionary state, as the scholars say. No, Zechariah's pretty much waking up at 3:00 in the morning or whatever time it was, like you would wake up at 3:00, or I would. I mean, the angel's shaking him. "Don't fall asleep now, Zechariah. You're only halfway home. You're only halfway done. God has some words that he wants to deliver to you. He has some things that he wants you to see." So the angel returns and wakes up Zechariah, and Zechariah's in for the ride of his life yet again. If you're able physically, could I invite you to stand together with me? Our text is Zechariah, chapter number four, and verse number two. "And the Bible tells us..." "And then speaking here is that angel that was sent to assist Zechariah, said unto me, What seest thou? And I said, I have looked, and behold..." You see that a lot in the book of Zechariah. "I've looked, and behold..." In other words, we would call that "I had to look twice." There's a whole lot of "I had to look twice" going on in the book of Zechariah, because God's man looked the first time, kinda shakes his head. He looks the second time. I mean, what Zechariah sees as God delivers these messages, they're rather stunning things. This is no exception. "I said, I have looked, and behold, a candlestick, all of gold." Now, if you have one of the modern Bibles that have been delivered to us by these scholars at the National Council of Churches, then you may have a Bible. And when I say "Bible," I'm assuming you know I mean "Bible with a small b." This is the Bible. The Bibles are the modern Bibles with small b's. And if you have one of those, they may have changed the word "candlestick" to "menorah." That would be a mistake. That would be an error. This is not a menorah. It doesn't look like a menorah. Not the menorah of the Old Testament, not the menorah that Jews began to use in New Testament times or modern times. There's a reason God said "candlestick," and he doesn't need the experts to corrupt the Bible and put the wrong word in, which means there are errors in modern Bibles. No, it is not a menorah, but it's a candlestick, all of gold. And notice the stunning description, "with a bowl on the top of it, and his seven lamps thereon, and seven pipes to the seven lamps, which are upon the top thereof, and two olive trees by it, one upon the right side of the bowl, and the other upon the left side thereof." So if you get the mental picture, there are these two olive trees. And while normally, the Levites would come to the temple and they would put the olive oil into the bowl, this bowl is getting it directly from these two trees. So the oil is falling into a big bowl. From that bowl, there are seven pipes or seven tubes, and each one of those tubes go to a lamp, an old-fashioned lamp they would use in Bible times. And the Bible tells us that there were these lamps that were presumably one day to be lit. So all of this is rather stunning. And as hard as it is for you to figure it out, because it's hard for me to explain it, it's even tougher, apparently, for Zechariah, because if you're here and you say, "I have a clue. What are the olive trees, and what are the candlesticks, and what are the lamps, and what are the tubes?" Well, you're in good company, because Zechariah pretty much wonders the same thing. So the Bible tells us Zechariah comes, and he sees this amazing thing. And in verse number four, he said, "So I answered and spake to the angel that talked with me, saying, What are these, my lord?" Lord, help us as we come to the Bible, and we would ask you again to speak to us. There's a powerful thing Zechariah needs to learn, and in our modern day, we have to learn this lesson desperately well. So I pray that the Word of God would do its work as it always does, and hearts and lives and minds and homes and men, ladies, young people. And if someone is here without Jesus Christ, what a day to call upon the name of the Savior and be born again. So help us now from the great words of our God, and I come boldly in the great name of Jesus. Amen. Thank you so much. Please be seated. So Zechariah is getting his fifth message from God in one night. And these two olive trees, they seem to be on each side of this reservoir. That reservoir's got tubes or pipes coming from it, and they go to the seven lamps that are all upon this candlestick. And it is all quite the thing for Zechariah to see. So if you're wondering what it all means, well, you're not the only one. Because Zechariah in verse number four says to the angel that is next to him, "What are these, my lord?" Would you notice, just for the record, in verse number four, that "lord" is a small "l," small "o," small "r," small "d"? All right? So he is not speaking to the God of heaven, who he's not speaking to Jehovah, his Savior. Of course, any time in the Old Testament, I shouldn't say "any time," almost every time. There's a few exceptions. That you see capital "L," capital "O," capital "R," capital "D", that is a reference to Jehovah, the "I am that I am," the Lord and the Savior of Israel. This time, he doesn't even use capital "L," small "ord," which would be a way of addressing God and saying, "You are the Lord of power. You are the Lord in control. You are the Lord that rules." No, this time, he is talking to the angel. So you notice how very carefully the Bible deals with that. He said, "What are these, my lord?" Sometimes in the Bible, the word "lord" is a very respectful way, like we might use the word "sir." "Sir, how are you?" "Sir, this." "Sir, that." Well, that is a common way the word "lord" is used in the Bible. So he's not addressing his Savior, Jehovah. He is not addressing Almighty God. He is talking to the angel that is next to him and has been next to him most of the night, and he asks the question, "What are these, my lord?" Of course he does. Come on, man, we got a mystery in front of us now. I mean, come on, here in this one thing Zechariah sees. We got candlesticks, and we got bowls, and we got tubes, and we've got these lamps, and then we got these two trees. Man, we got enough mystery here to write a book. We got enough mystery here to put out a podcast. We got enough here to blog for a long, long time. And so Zechariah does what most Christians do, it seems. Zechariah's so enamored by what he is seeing in front of him, he said, "What are these, my lord?" So understand now, Zechariah knows what he sees, but he just doesn't know the secret sauce. He doesn't know the hidden meaning. So what does the candlestick represent? And what do the pipes represent? And what do those big trees represent? Zechariah's looking at this thing in front of him, and he says to the angel, "What are these, my lord?" You know, by the time you get down to verse number 11, do you know what he does not have? He doesn't have an answer to his question. Come on, this is the most important thing, isn't it? I mean, I'm looking at this candlestick, and I'm looking at these pipes, and I'm looking at these lamps, and I'm looking at this bowl, and I'm looking at these trees. "What are these, my lord?" And you go all the way down to verse number 11, and Zechariah still doesn't know. So look what he does again. "Then answered I, and said unto him, What are these two olive trees that are on the right side of the candlestick and upon the left side thereof?" Okay, so Zechariah thinks, you know, maybe my problem is I'm not specific enough. Let me try this question again, because obviously, the big thing in here is the secret meaning of the candlestick and the secret meaning of the olive trees and the secret meaning of those lamps. So he already asked, "What are these, my lord?", and he didn't get an answer. So he tries it again, and notice he's a little more specific. Well, he says, "Let's just ask, what are these two olive trees that are upon the right side of the candlestick and upon the left side thereof?" You know, what if I get a little more specific? This is kinda like when, you know, you travel to another country. About a month from now, Lord willing, I should be in Ephesus, Turkey or some region like that. And I have no... I couldn't tell you one word in Turkish. You know, I just have no desire, actually. So I can't speak a word of Turkish. I'm hoping they can speak a word or two of English. But you know, you've been there. Some of you have, and I've been there more than once. And you know what it's like, right? You want to find a good restaurant. So I might walk up in a month from now to somebody in Turkey and say, "Hey, where can I find a good restaurant?" And the guy's gonna say, "No, I ain't no English," or whatever he's gonna say, you know? And so you know what I'll probably do is something like, "Oh, okay. Where can I find a good restaurant?" Now somehow, if I talk a little slower and if I talk a little louder, the guy who can't understand a word of English is gonna figure it out. And I'm sorry, it doesn't work that way. The guy's got the same blank look, no matter how much he goes slower or I go slower. I'm not getting it. He's not getting it. And here is Zechariah thinking this might work with the angel. "Excuse me, you missed my question. I'm asking, what are these, my lord? There's gotta be some secret meaning here. There's gotta be something that's incredibly powerful here." Come on, man, we have got two olive trees, and we got that reservoir, and we got the lamps, and we got the pipes, and we got the candlestick. Come on, what's the secret sauce? So he changes the question a little bit and says, "What if I narrow it down? So what are those two olive trees that are on each side? You know, what is all this stuff? What is it?" And the Bible tells us Zechariah still doesn't get his answer. And so three times, he comes and he says, "What are these? What are these?" The last time, he says, "What be these?" I'm not sure what the difference is, but you know, Zechariah's looking for the secret answer. He's looking for the secret message. He's looking for the code that's gonna explain what candlesticks and olive trees are. And Zechariah, chapter four. And the thing is, he never gets the answer. So he comes back three times, and now, in verse number 13, he answered me and said, "Knowest thou not what these be?" He gets what the angel said more than once. You mean, you don't know? I mean, here he is saying, you know, what is all this stuff? And he answers, "You don't know?" And he comes back, "But what about the olive tree? You mean, you don't know? Yeah, but what about the reservoir there? And you know, what about the lamps? You mean, you don't know? Knowest thou not what these be?" And Zechariah said in verse number 13, "No, my lord." Zechariah doesn't seem to be getting the message. He keeps asking, and he doesn't get an answer. So look what happens in verse number 14. I mean, if it weren't so dead serious, this would almost be funny. But you know, I got a New England accent, a New England kinda sense of humor, so I think it's funny. In verse number 14, he said, "These are the two anointed ones that stand by the Lord of the whole earth." So follow the story. Here's Zechariah, and he sees this thing in front of him. "And what is this?" And five verses later, he doesn't have an answer. So he says, "Well, I'll try again. What is this? And then, what are these? What be these?" And he never gets the answer until verse number 14. He wants to know what those olive trees are, and so the answer is, "These are the two anointed ones that stand by the Lord of the whole earth." Or in other words, he thinks he gets an answer, but all that answer does is make it all the more complicated and all the more difficult, because he really doesn't get an answer. And that's the problem, isn't it? I mean, people think they're gonna get into the newest prophecy, and they're gonna discover the newest and the latest, and they got some hidden thing. You know, you know what we're about due for? Because it's probably been about 10 years. We're about due. I mean, I'm not the prophet, the son of the prophet. However, if this prophecy comes to pass, remember where you heard it first. But you know, we're kinda due. You know what we're due for? For somebody to come up with one of these secret Bible code books. You know, they come up like once every 10 years or so. A secret Bible code, where the latest computer runs some message from the Bible, and all of a sudden, they come up with stuff nobody ever saw before, you know? Like somewhere like in 2002, one of these guys wrote a secret Bible code book, and he found in the Bible where 2011 was gonna take place. You know, I find they always come up with this stuff after the fact. You know, they always got this secret code running that they can tell us what happened last year. "Well, thanks, you know, thanks. Oh, yeah, here's coronavirus." If you could tell me who's gonna win the Super Bowl next February, then that would help a little bit. But oh, no, 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 no. They never do that. It's just a phony scheme to sell books. You know, one day, I did make the mistake of buying one of those Bible code books, and I tracked down the guy's testimony, or better say, lack of testimony. I found an interview, and they were talking to the guy who wrote it. And in the interview, the guy said, "Well, are you a Christian? Do you believe I'm the Lord?" And he flat out said, "Oh, no. Oh, no, 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 no." And you know, that kinda tells me everything I need to know about all these secret findings in the Bible. You know, you don't have to be a professor, and you don't have to get the secret code to know, "Believe I'm the Lord Jesus Christ, and thou shall be saved." Brother, that's about as simple as it goes. And if somebody is gonna reject the plain Bible that is clear for all, I really don't want their opinion about the secret thing that only they and their computer know about. So we're pretty much due again, aren't we? I mean, it's been a while, so there's gonna be another code book. And they're gonna find something that nobody else ever found. They're gonna see something nobody else ever sees. And that's kinda where we are, right here, because Zechariah's got this question. "What are these? What are these? What are these?" And he doesn't get an answer. And when he finally does get an answer, all that does is raise more questions. "These are two anointed ones." "Oh, really? Like, what two anointed ones?" And seeing as how the Bible never says what two anointed ones, well, you know what that means. That means our friend, the scholars. The seminary professors are gonna step in and take care of God's problem for him. So what are the two anointed ones that the Lord didn't identify? Well, somebody says it refers to the Messiah. That kinda doesn't work, because there's not two Messias. It refers to Aaron and David. "Oh, no, 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 no. It refers to Aaron and the Messiah." "No, no, no. It refers to Zechariah and Haggai." "Oh, no, no, no. It refers to the two witnesses of Revelation 11." I suppose the most common one is that it refers to Joshua and Zerubbabel. That seems to be the default answer, but that doesn't make any sense to me, because if you go back to chapter three, well, God spends that chapter talking about Zerubbabel. And he spends in chapter three talking about Joshua as well. So God has already introduced them, and Zechariah full well knows who they are. So if it was Zerubbabel and Joshua, don't you think the Word of God would've told us? And God didn't tell us. And so the scholars and the experts think, "Well, they gotta come along and explain it to us." And of course, that's not the only question, because here's Zechariah saying, "Well, what do the olive trees represent? And what does the bowl represent? And what are the lamps for? And what do the golden pipes tell us? And what is the meaning of the golden candlestick?" Well, once again, the Bible doesn't say. And so our friends, the seminary professors, the scholars, step in to explain what the Lord forgot to tell us. And the candlestick refers to the testimony of Israel. The candlestick refers to Israel's glorious fullness. The olive trees stand for God's power. The oil is the spirit of God. Golden oil refers to honor, joy, and favor. The trees represent the righteous, and the tree represents the royal and priestly offices. You see, I'm trying to say, I'm trying to say that God didn't tell us, and that doesn't mean we get a license to start playing word games with the Bible. And it happens all the time. I know your preacher's starting to work through... I know your preacher's starting to work through Revelation. Boy, you're gonna hear a lot of examples. Because the liberal seminary professors think it's their right to take anything they find in the Book of Revelation, twist it, and make it say something it doesn't say. Ladies and gentlemen, it's nothing new. It's the same disease that God's man Zachariah has. What are these, what is that, what are those trees, what does all this represent? And when he even gets an answer from heaven, it doesn't make any sense. And it actually makes more questions than he had when he first started. Why, there must be something else here. There must be something bigger here. And could I say, that is the problem. Because when we're so inclined to the YouTube channel of the prophecy superstar. You know, just for me, okay, here's, here's what I'm very wary of. A guy who has a regularly scheduled YouTube show. I mean, some archaeological expert, or some prophecy expert. Because you know, if at Thursday at 2:00 in the afternoon, he's gonna be on, he's gotta have something to say, doesn't he? And it might be it's something real, but chances are, he's making something up, because he's gotta have something to say. Otherwise, you don't have subscribers. And if you don't have subscribers, well, you don't get money. And if you don't get money, how you gonna be on the YouTube? So I'm not a fan of people that got a regular show. Next Thursday, I'm gonna have something brand new. Don't know what it is yet, but I know it's new, really. It's kind of like, every once in a while, I've been in a Baptist church, and maybe a preacher's meeting, and I've heard preachers get up and say, "I'm gonna preach something you never heard before." You know, about 10 minutes later, I'm saying, "Yeah, I never heard that before." 10 more minutes later, I'm thinking, and I hope I never hear it again, you know? And that's why you have to be careful. And Zachariah, chapter four, for that reason, is a beautiful thing for a church going through the Book of Revelation. Because what Zachariah does is what most people want to do with Revelation. Find a secret thing, find something nobody else gets. All right, we're gonna line up the headlines of the newspaper with what the Bible says in Revelation. And that is some dangerous, dangerous business. The first time I heard that, I was 15 years old, and a famous evangelist was holding a citywide meeting in the state of Connecticut. And my Friday night came, and he had vultures in Israel and 666 on license plates. I mean, by the time it was all said and done, I was walking out of there with everybody else having a panic attack. But you know, it all turns out the guy was dead wrong. That's why you don't speculate, you preach what the Bible says. And I believe that's the lesson God is giving to Zachariah in Zachariah, chapter four. Because like most of us, he's seeing olive trees and lamps, candlesticks, and pipes, and reservoirs, and he's saying, "What is all this, what is all this, what be all this?" And now the God of the Bible maybe has something else. Do you follow the story, right? It all starts, he's getting wakened out of sleep in verse number one, and then the angel that talks with him says, "Look at this." And now he sees what he sees, and then he says, "What are these?" Then we skip down to verse number 11, "What are these, what are these?" And when he finally gets a semi-answer to "What be these", he doesn't get a good answer, because he doesn't even know yet, and it's even worse. Maybe, maybe what God was trying to say in verses 6 through 10 is more important than the secret sauce of the meaning of the olive trees. Maybe, maybe when you come to the Book of Revelation, that instead of the secret little things that nobody else knows about, maybe it's more important to see what's the big message that God is trying to declare. And in Zachariah, chapter four, while Zachariah's all worked up about all these extra things, would you go back to verse number six and see what Zachariah misses? Because Zachariah's all stirred up about what's a candlestick, and what are the olive trees, and what is this, and what is that, and what does it mean, and what does it stand for? God is trying to teach him something else. And it appears that Zachariah, at least at first, misses it all. Okay, so just for a minute, let's just forget about the secret meanings of all the stuff. And go back to chapter number six, and let's see if there's something else maybe that Zachariah misses that you and I can't afford to miss. Notice he answered and spoken to me, saying, "This is the word of the Lord unto Zerubbabel." So the God of the Bible is saying, "Zachariah, forget all that for a minute, because I have a message for you to give to Zerubbabel. Zerubbabel's the governor. Zerubbabel, we would know him in our country as a president. He is the political leader. There is, of course, the leader of the house of God, a priest by the name of Joshua. And Zerubbabel is the man who is in charge of the kingdom. He is not a king, but he is the governor, the political representative living in Jerusalem." So the Bible tells us God has a message for Zachariah to deliver it to the governor. "But what does the candlestick mean? And but what are those pipes, what's the secret meaning? Come on, what is so special about the golden oil that's flowing through those things?" And God says, "I got something else. I have a message for you to declare to Zerubbabel." And notice that message in verse number six. And remember now, he's speaking to the governor. He's speaking to the guy in charge of the armies. He's speaking to the captain. He's speaking to their commander in chief. And he says, "Not by might, nor by power, but by my Spirit saith the Lord of hosts." You see, everything that is happening in Haggai and Zachariah, the twin books, is the building of the house of God. And for 16 years, 18 years, nothing happens. And God raises up Haggai to tell the people, "What are you doing? You have your houses, and God doesn't have his. You take care of your priorities and care nothing about his." And I mean, Haggai really preaches hard, and then Zachariah follows him up, and Zachariah preaches more to the heart. Haggai's saying, "Do, do, do." And Zachariah's a lot of, "Get your heart right, get your heart right." And that's a fascinating thing. Because you know, over the period of time, we've watched the pendulum switch and move. When I first started years ago, in independent Baptist churches, there was a whole lot of "do, do, 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 do." And you know, quite frankly, maybe there wasn't enough heart, 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 heart. "Do, do, 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 do." And there's a lot of people, "did, did, 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 did," but they didn't "did, did, 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 did" with a good heart. Could I wonder, speculate, do you think maybe the pendulum's gone too far the other way? And while please almost understand, the heart is so incredibly important, it could never be overemphasized. You know, we've got so much today about how do you feel, and what is your heart like? And nobody seems, I don't say nobody, but very few people seem to want to do anything. Can't we just get the balance? That's why I love Haggai and Zachariah. Haggai is "do, do, do," and Zachariah is "get your heart right with God." And can't we get the pendulum to stop here in the middle for a bit? And we can actively do something for Jesus and keep a tender heart towards him? That's the story of Zachariah, the story of Haggai. And now if the work of God is gonna be done, and the big work was to build that temple, God said, "Your leaders, Zerubbabel, you need to understand, it is not gonna happen by might. Might refers to military power. There is no army that's gonna step in here and get the job done. And nor is it going to be done by power. More talking about human ability, and human thinking, and human reasoning. No, no, Zerubbabel, you may be the governor, but that doesn't change anything here. If the work of God is going to be done, and the temple of God is going to be built, it is not gonna be done by human means. It is not gonna be done by human strength. It is not gonna be done by human armies. It is not by might and not by power." Well, then, how is it gonna happen? Well, the Bible said it is gonna be done by God's Spirit, the spirit of the Lord of hosts. You know, anytime we see the capital L, capital O, capital R, capital D, Jehovah, it's time to stop. That's an incredibly important moment. But anytime you see the phrase, and it's all over this part of the Bible, "The Lord of hosts," that's when it's time to put the brakes on and think. Because the Lord of the hosts, you know, I don't know where I got this one. When I was a little kid, I used to think that the host of heaven, they were the choirs. I don't know where I got that. I guess I got that from the Christmas story, that's got nothing to do with it. But that's how I thought, I thought a host was a choir, but it isn't. A host is the armies. The Lord of the host is the Lord of heavenly armies. The Lord of the battle, the Lord of power. In other words, when these words are declared, it is not gonna be done by your military strengths, Zerubbabel. It is not gonna be done because you raise money from wealthy people. But if the work of God is going to be done, it will be accredited solely to the God of the battles, to the God of the armies. The Lord is amassing his armies to stand behind the word that he has spoken. God is gonna build his work. God is gonna build his work. Not your might, not your power, not your strength, not your money, not your thinking. God, by the armies of heaven, will see that his work is done. Could I say, that's a whole lot more important than what does the bowl mean? That's a whole lot more important than, "What does that candlestick actually represent?" You understand? While Zachariah's all stirred up about what is this, what is this, what be this, give me the secret sauce, while he's all worried about the thing that doesn't matter, what really does matter is what God just told him. And God was saying, "Zachariah, when this morning comes, and this night that I've given you these messages are done, you got a lot of preaching material. And it's gonna be your job to go to the streets of Jerusalem and stand before the people, and tell them that God's work is not gonna be done by the biggest armies, and God's work is not gonna be done by human power. But God's work will only be done when people realize he is the commander in chief." A whole lot more important than the secret meanings. Notice in verse number seven, the question is asked, "Who art thou, O great mountain?" 11 times in the Old Testament, mountains referred to opposition and resistance. Now, I don't know if that's exactly what God is saying here, but what I do know in verse number seven is that mountain that is standing in front of the people, trying to build a temple for God, "Before Zerubbabel, thou shall become a plain." You know, that's literally what happened. They literally, when they were building the second temple, that's what this is all about. They basically went outside of Jerusalem and took the rock from a mountain. A big old mountain became a flat plain, because they were building the house of God. So God says, "You need to know, Zachariah, this isn't gonna happen by human and military. It is not gonna happen by human wisdom. It isn't gonna happen by anything except the power of God." And you know, by now, the people had been discouraged and even defeated. There was so much opposition, opposition from without, and opposition from within. But the Bible tells us in verse number seven, "There is going to come a day when he, Zerubbabel, shall bring forth a headstone thereof." That's fascinating, because when it all started, Zerubbabel laid the cornerstone, the first stone. Now he is saying, "There is coming a day when that building is gonna be done." But that was 18 long years ago. And nobody's giving to the work, and nobody's sweating over the work, and nobody's picking up the boulders. And God says, "I'm gonna take, I'm gonna get this done." And when it is all said and done, the guy that put down the first stone, he's gonna put, sometimes we call it the capstone, the headstone. He's gonna put on the last stone, from the first stone to the last stone. Everybody is going to know that this is a work of God. This didn't happen because some multi-billionaire decided to roll out a paycheck. This isn't gonna happen because some slick TV preacher came up with some new cool way to get this done. This isn't gonna happen because of human manipulation. You know, when they take an offering for the 13th time till they finally get what they want. No, nobody's arm is twisted, nobody's got a gun to their head. The God of the Bible says, "Not by your might, not by your power, but by my Spirit saith the Lord of hosts." One day, they're putting a capstone, they're putting the headstone on top of that wall. You know what they're gonna say when it happens? Look in verse number seven. At the end of that verse, as that building is finally finished, they're gonna say, "Grace, grace unto it." You see what he's saying? You're not gonna build this by military power, you're not gonna build it by human invention. But when it is all said and done, it will be a work that is such an impossible work that in the midst of all the foes, and all the opposition, and all the reasons why not, that people are gonna have to shake their head and say, "There's a reason that temple is there, and it's all because of the grace of God. It is all because of what God has done, God's grace, God's mercy, God's goodness." You understand? That's a whole lot more important than the secret meaning of the bowl. And we get all worked up about, "What does that mean, and what does that mean? What's the secret thing?" You know, sometimes, it happens to me like maybe once a month, it probably happens a lot more to your pastor. You know, somebody's gonna go into some grand, you know, some grand explanation. And I'm thinking, "Oh, no, here we go, here we go," you know? And it's like about a 30 minute, I had one last week, about a 30 minute deal, you know? And we got this little text over here, you know that, you know that verse in Ezekiel, chapter 26, verse 13? No, no, I really don't know it. But, oh, yeah, yeah, and then we got this little phrase out of here that kind of corresponds to this thing in Lamentations, which rather refers directly, don't you think, back to this text in Exodus? Which kind of indicates that this text in Isaiah must be referring to what we're reading in the Book of Haggai. And, and, and you know, I'm just, "Oh, yeah, yeah, that sounds good. Yeah, I've never heard that before, that's great, I gotta go." You know, humans think they gotta find some secret thing that nobody else has ever seen. But you understand what's big here? Grace, the grace of God, that when that temple is finally done, and the capstone, the headstone is finally placed upon it, that the people are gonna look up to heaven and say, "Great things he hath done." The grace of God has builded this. Not our human strength, not our human might, not our human power. That's a whole lot more important than, "What is that, and what is this, and what be this, and what be this?" Because Zachariah's all stirred up about the what be's. He misses the work of grace. Notice something else he misses. Go to verse number eight. And if you and I get all stirred up about the secret sauce and the secret meaning, we're gonna first miss the work of grace God does. But then, in verse eight, "Moreover, the word of the Lord came unto me, saying, 'The hands of Zerubbabel have laid the foundation of this house; his hands also shall also finish it.'" Well, okay, that's absurd, and that's an impossibility, and nobody would agree to this. The experts wouldn't say this is so. I mean, the Bible in this part of the word of God is very, very direct and clear as to dating. It's just an amazing thing. 538 B.C. was when the building of the temple started. 536 B.C. was when it was abandoned. It was 16 years of nothing. Then in 520 B.C., God raised up Haggai. At the end of 520 B.C., last month in October, God raised up Zachariah. And now here they are, building the temple again. Now here they are, doing the work of God again. Zerubbabel lays the foundation. Ultimately, he's the guy that would put the last stone in. March the 13th, 515 B.C. is coming. That's the day the temple was finally finished. And it all happens because in verse number eight, look what it said. "Moreover, the word of the Lord came unto me." Look, there was not an expert who believes that temple's ever gonna get done. I mean, everybody's discouraged, everybody's defeated, it is too expensive, nobody can pay for it, there's no way this is ever gonna get done. But it's gonna get done, and the reason it's gonna get done is because God's word says so, because the Bible said it so. My friend, you and I can go to the word of God and be reminded yet one more time of, who knows, 10,000 times, if not more. You and I are reminded from little Zachariah, chapter number four, that when God said it, it is so. When God said it, it is like it has already happened, that's how sure it is. And the word of the Lord said, "That temple's going up, that temple's gonna be done, Zerubbabel's gonna lay the headstone." It's all gonna happen because God's word says so. It's all going to happen because God's word says so. But when we get all worked up about, "What about, what kind of oil is in there?" You know? It talks about golden oil, and, and, you know, "Where does that golden oil come from?" "What are those leaves on the olive tree? What do they represent?" And we get worked up about all this stuff that God doesn't mention and doesn't explain. And now here it is right in front of us. The work of God is done by the grace of God and the grace of God alone. And now we learned that when God gives His words to Zechariah, that every word of God is sure, that every word of God is so. Yeah, it's a whole lot more important than what nobody knows is what the Bible clearly says. And Zechariah's so stirred up about, "What is that? And what is that?" That he misses the fact God's worse is done, God's work is done by grace. And God's word is always so. He's always standing on the word of God. He's standing on the promises of Christ my King. We can always plan our lives, our families, our marriages, our businesses. You can plant Berea and Baptist Church right on the rock-solid pages of the Bible because the word of the Lord is sure. Heaven and earth shall pass away, but my words shall not pass away. You're missing it, Zechariah. You're all worried about what the podcaster and the bloggers are going to say. You're all worried about having secret meanings. That you're missing the most important thing. The grace of God builds His work. The word of God is sure. How about one more thing? Go if you would to verse number nine. "And thou shalt know that the Lord of hosts hast sent me unto you." So there's a question that God has for Zechariah in verse 10, and it's a pretty good question for all of us. "For who hath despised the day of small things?" Boy, was that ever convicting. Because you know, as God's word was sure, and this temple was being rebuilt as the mountain was being leveled so that that box could be laid, as the building goes up right in front of their eyes, all the naysayers said, "Never happened." All the political opponents of other nations said, "We're going to stop it." I mean, everything about the city, everything about the temple. It faced opposition every single step of the way, and now it's built in front of them. And you know what they did in Haggai, chapter two, and even here it's indicating? They started complaining. Excuse me, but I think, wasn't it true like twenty years ago, you were all in bondage? You know, in Babylon, some of you, and, and, was that your crowd? You know, a little few young Persian? And now you've come back, and, and the last your fathers told you about Jerusalem, it was nothing but ruin, and it was blood flowing down the streets, and, and the princes were hanging by their necks over the city walls. And the last you heard, it was nothing but sorrow and weeping, and Jerusalem was done. And when your fathers were being led away, they turned back and saw smoke rise over the city of Jerusalem. The city was dead. And now here you are back in this city by a miracle of God. Here you are back in this city, and the temple is being rebuilt. Here you are back in the city, and anybody with any mind has to say, "God hath done great things for us," Psalm 124:1. "God has done great things for us wherever we are glad." And God did it every step of the way, and now here come the naysayers and the complainers. If I was in Iowa, I'd call bellakers. "Oh, yeah, you know, this temple doesn't have the glory of the previous temple. This temple doesn't look like the other one did." "The one that God let Solomon build was a whole lot bigger than this one." And these people are actually complaining about this. Okay, well, what would be good then? Should we all just shut it down and go back to Babylon? And maybe they can find a way to deal with you? What do you want to do? Just want to go to the king of Persia and say, "Thanks for all the money, but forget it." Really, it's not as pretty as the other one was? It's not as, you know, the temple, it's not the temple because it's beautiful. It's not the temple because of the silver and the gold. The temple's not the temple because of all the ornaments. The temple is a temple because the presence of God was there. And the God of the Bible was not impressed with their griping. So the word of God tells us, God had the question in verse number 10. Really? "For who hath despised the day of small things?" God's really giving it to them, isn't it? You guys don't like it because it's too small? Do you think I despise the day of small things? I know the era in which we live says, "Big, big, big, and if it's big, it must be right." And if thousands of people are showing up in a house of religion on Sunday morning, then that must be the right thing. Because after all, the people are always right. I mean, there could have been a time when the people were right. I just don't know when that ever was in human history. But you know, the crowd always does it their way. And somehow, we get to thinking that if it's big, it must be right. And the God of the Bible intervenes and says, "Who hath despied the day of small things?" Now, I can be as very real in that temple that is now built in Jerusalem as I was the day that Solomon offered sacrifices in the original one. Oh, the God of the Bible says, "Who hath despied the day of small things?" Last I checked, it was a pretty small thing that Moses was laid in, in the ark of the bulrush. It was a pretty small stone that David held in his sling. It was a pretty small lunch that was in the hand of that little boy. I love the fact that the Lord Jesus Christ was never impressed by a big crowd, and he was never depressed by a small crowd. Didn't matter. Because the Lord knew there could be twenty thousand freeloaders in front of him that were there for the free meals and the miracles. But when it was all said and done, he'd have to get it done. Well, I would say with twelve, but one of them was a devil. So the Lord's not impressed. And the Lord doesn't need it big, and the Lord doesn't need a crowd, and the Lord doesn't need a huge bank account. The Lord doesn't need anything that humans think He needs to assist Him to get the work done. It's not by might, not by power, not by human strength. God says, "I'm going to build my work by my grace. You'll know the word of God is so when you see that temple with your eyes. And you better realize that when it's all said and done, it's that little temple that God uses to do a great work." "Who hath despised the day of small things?" The God of the Bible makes a promise at the end of verse number 10. "They shall rejoice and shall see the plummet in the hand of Zerubbabel. With those seven, they are the eyes of the Lord, which run through and through through the whole earth." God said, "Zechariah, one day, tell the people, they're going to see the plummet. They're going to see the, the final tool that Zerubbabel's going to use to build this place. They are going to see that, 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 we would call it a level. They're going to see that the temple of God is exactly right, just like God has wanted it. And when it's all said and done, they're going to know that God uses small people, small things to do great works for Him." Unfortunately, Zechariah missed the whole thing, didn't he? Because he's all worked up, he's online checking out the latest prophecy expert. And, "Oh, no, no, they got this YouTube channel where, where they're going to take the latest news and whatever the latest news is, you know, and whatever's going on in Alberta or something. Oh, yeah, yeah, we got this one right here. It's another sign of the times." And people are all worked up about things nobody can explain. Instead of going to the Bible and seeing what God clearly says, do you see what he misses? Because he's saying, "What's this? And what's this? And what's that? What's that?" There's one There's one of the greatest lessons in the Bible about standard and sure promises of God. And there's a great passage in the Bible about God using small things, of God using those little things that this world has abandoned. So while Zechariah's all worked up about the stuff nobody knows, well, there's a few things God's trying to teach him. God wants to keep His word, and He always will. God is ready to do a work of power and a work of grace. God is more than able to level the mountain of opposition. God is ready to finish the work that He has begun. God will pour out His power and His grace upon those laboring for Him. And when it's all said and done, well, the Lord doesn't need it big. He doesn't need it mighty. He is able to do great things with little things. So Zechariah, what do you think? What do I think? Verse four, "What are these?" Verse number 11, "What are these?" Verse number 12, "What be these?" Kind of like a lot of people sitting in churches like Berea and Baptist Church on Sunday morning. They got the secret stuff. The plain truth of the Bible just goes right beyond it. The Bible tells us in Deuteronomy, chapter 29, 29, "Thus secret things belong unto the Lord our God; but those which are revealed belong unto us and to our children forever." Why? Why is this temple built? Why does God do great things with little things? "That we may do all the words of the law." And that's it. Zechariah's saying, "What are these? And what are these? And what are these?" But what God wants to hear is, "What wilt thou have me to do?" "What are these?" is not the same thing as, "What wilt thou have me to do?" And with Zechariah all stirred up about some secret hidden message, the God of the Bible is trying to say, "Zechariah, with the little that is in Jerusalem right now, I am able to do more than you could imagine." We miss God's work because we're asking the wrong questions. Years ago, in 1884, a young lady lived in upstate New York. Her name was Kitty Janet. And she moved into her teenage years. She longed to be a singer and a, a, perhaps a soprano, a pianist. She had some tremendous musical abilities. She had a great testimony for Jesus Christ. And so one day, she was invited to a meeting in a church in Winchester, Ontario. And Kitty Janet was going to sing. When the meeting was done, the people that had gone, they were on a train, and that train was heading back from Ontario to New York State. Yet as it was in the winter, there was several feet of snow that fell, and the train was stuck. It looked pretty desperate. It was a cold, cold Canadian night. And the people on that train weren't sure what to do. But little did they know that really, right around the corner from where the train was stuck, you think the Lord knows what he's doing? Right around the corner, there was an old farmer, not that old actually. His name was Fred Suffield, but he had an old family farm. And when he heard the problem, he got his horse and sleigh, and he got all those people off the train and brought them to his house. And they sat by the fire. Maybe not the most comfortable place that night, but they had a safe place where they stayed warm before the tracks were cleared. Well, needless to say, everybody was thankful, but the one perhaps a little most thankful, who happened to leave behind a little thank you note, was Kitty Janet. And Fred Suffield read that note, and well, you know what happens next? That little note from that little storm, from that stopped train. Well, it turned into a Mr. and Mrs. scenario. And Mr. and Mrs. Fred Suffield spent the next decades traveling Canada, traveling America, preaching the word of God. As her husband would preach, she would sing beautiful music that honors the Lord Jesus Christ. Not only did she sing, but God gave Kitty some tremendous ability to write. And Kitty Suffield has written some of our favorite songs years later. When they were old now and unable to travel, they were living in Midway City, California. And a pastor from down the road in Pasadena was asked to visit them. And so the preacher got in his car, and he made his way to the house. And, and you know, your preacher will tell you, this, this happens a lot. You know, you go to be a blessing to some sweet old saint. And all the way, you're saying, "I know they got physical problems, and I know there's just a lot of things piling up, and, and there's just something about age." And the preacher's going there, your preacher's been there. "I want to be a blessing. Lord, help me to be a blessing." But this was one of those cases your pastor can tell you about where, "Well, I don't know if I was a blessing to them, but they sure were a blessing to me." And by the time it was time to go, well, the pastor is so encouraged and blessed by the testimony of Kitty and Fred Suffield. And so he bowed his head. He said, "Could I pray for you before I go?" And he prayed, and he closed the words of his prayer by quoting the words of a gospel song. When he was done, he looked up, and Kitty Suffield smiled and says, "Well, do you like that song?" And the preacher, "I love that song. It's one of my favorite songs." And Kitty Suffield said, "Really? Because I was the one who wrote that song thirty-three years ago." And you know, Zechariah would have, perhaps he wouldn't back then, but today, he would appreciate the words that Kitty Suffield wrote. Because while he was all worked up about, "What does that mean? And what are those olive trees? And what about the oil? And what's this? And what's that?" There was something bigger God wanted to teach him. And Kitty Suffield got what apparently Zechariah didn't. She wrote it like this. "In the harvest fields now ripen, there's a work for us to do. Hark! The voice of God is calling to the harvest, calling you. Does the place you're called the labor seem too small and little known? It is great if God is in it, and He will not forget His own. Have you laid aside from service, body worn from toil and care? You can still be in the battle in the sacred place of prayer. Because when the conflict here is ended and our race on earth is done, He will say, if we are faithful, 'Welcome home, my child. Well done.'" And then, maybe we don't know the verse so well, but I think we all know that chorus. "Little is much when God is in it. Labor not for wealth or fame. There's a crown, and you can win it if you go in Jesus' name." Zechariah's worried about this and that and that and this. And when it's all said and done, you may have noticed that as you come to the end of this message, he still doesn't know. Because it's not important what the lamp stands for or what the candlesticks represent. What matters is that there is the living God.